I'd like to call the April Meeting of the Board of Education to order. First item invocation, Ms. Kraft?
Yes. The government recently calculated the cost of raising a child from birth to eighteen and came up with $160,140 for a middle-income family. That doesn't even touch college tuition, but that isn't so bad if you break it down. It translates into this: $8,896.66 a year, $741.30 a month. That's a mere $24.24 a day, just over a dollar an hour. Still, you might think the best financial advice is not to have children if you want to be rich. Actually, it's just the opposite. What do you get for your $160,000? Naming rights, first, middle, and last. Glimpses of God every day. Giggles under the covers every night. More love than your heart can hold. Butterfly kisses and Velcro hugs. Endless wonder over rocks, ants, clouds, and warm cookies. A hand to hold, usually covered with jelly or chocolate. A partner for blowing bubbles and flying kites. Someone to laugh yourself silly with no matter what the boss said or how your stocks performed that day. For $160,000, you never have to grow up. You get to finger paint, carve pumpkins, play hide-and-seek, catch lightning bugs, and never stop believing in Santa Claus. You have an excuse to keep reading The Adventures of Piglet and Pooh, watching Saturday morning cartoons, going to Disney movies, and wishing on stars. You get to name, you get to frame rainbows, hearts, and flowers under refrigerator magnets, and spray paint noodle wreaths for Christmas, handprints set in clay for Mother's Day, and cards with backward letters for Father's Day. For $160,000, there's no greater bang for your buck. You get to be a hero just for retrieving a frisbee off the garage roof, taking the training wheels off a bike, removing a splinter, filling a waiting pool, coaxing a wad of gum out of bangs, and coaching a baseball team that never wins but always gets treated to ice cream regardless. You get a front-row seat to witness, to history, to witness the first step, first word, first bra, first date, and first time behind the wheel. You get to be immortal. You get another branch added to your family tree, and if you're lucky, a long list of limbs in your obituary called grandchildren and great-grandchildren. You get an education in psychology, nursing, criminal justice, communications, and human sexuality that no college can match. In the eyes of a child, you rank right up there under God. You have all the power to heal a boo-boo, scare away the monsters under the bed, patch a broken heart, police a slumber party, ground them forever, and love them without limits. Love and enjoy your children and your grandchildren.
Thank you. Next, WT Griggs' principal, Angel Lasher, will introduce the person who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We have a fifth-grade student, Myra Hanbury, who is the daughter of Elizabeth Howe and Matt Hanbury, who will be leading us in the pledge.
Would you all please rise?
(audience cheering) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our school spotlight this month is also on WT Griggs Elementary, so I'll leave it to Principal Angel Lasher.
Good evening, Chairman Domney, board members, and Superintendent Osmond. First of all, I would like to say that I am the one taking the videos, and I am horrible at taking videos, so just bear with us on those. And also, we had four students who were going to be with us tonight, and unfortunately, we only have two that were able to make it, so if they can come up with me right now. Tonight, we are going to be sharing with you our Action-Based Learning Lab. We all know the importance of movement and its link to learning. This past summer, Mr. Baldwin, Ms. Belangia, myself, and a team of teachers attended a training on action-based learning. And through this training, we learned how our brain works and how we can use movement to enhance our learning. Right now, what you're watching is some of the equipment that we were able to get that is in one of our individual classrooms. And what those students were doing, the boy who was on the machine that was kind of like simulated walking, was also doing, he was doing writing and reading what he had written to a peer who was standing beside him, who was kind of editing. The girl who was on the machine, the other equipment, was doing fluency practice. And so, the teacher had assigned them a list of fluency words, and she was on there doing their fluency. What they have found is that your body and your brain work together all the time, obviously, but that when you're moving and you get to a word that you maybe don't know, or you're practicing that fluency, you stop moving as well. And so, it's just getting those kids moving and practicing their reading that's correlated, that crawling goes with reading, and all of these things. And so, when Ms. Belangia shared with you in the fall was the K-2 lab, and since then, we've been able to get some of this equipment that you're seeing now into our 3-5 lab. This is in just one classroom, but here in a moment, the children are going to share to you, with you about the 3-5 lab, what equipment is in there, the activities they do when they go in there, and what they like about it. And then, I'll show you some more activities that they have done. So, I'm going to introduce Malachi Moore. He's going to go first. He's a fourth grader.
Hi, I am a fourth-grade student in Griggs Elementary School. I like all the equipment in the ABL lab. Some of the equipment that we have are the elliptical, treadmill, bike, stepper, skiing, and snowboard. I like that we can exercise and learn at the same time in the ABL lab.
Hi, my name is Myra Hanbury, and today I am going to tell you about the ABL lab and how it works. First, we learned that your left side of your brain controls your right leg, and the right side of your brain controls your left leg. We also learned that exercising while studying improves your health and our memory. Thank you for taking your time to listen to why we love our ABL lab. Thank you.
The first video you're going to see right now is Ms. Cotton's class. She is our 4-5 language arts teacher.
Look, rotate this way. Call out the words to your partner. Here's your timer. You have three minutes. At the end of the first three minutes, you switch with your partner. And the next time, you switch machines going that direction.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we start?
You make it. You make the beginning.
Put this one, put that one. Put your feet on this part. Put both feet high.
Right now, what they're doing is practicing their spelling words. Ms. Cotton uses the lab on quite a regular basis. She also does some vocabulary practice in there. Most recently, she has taken it to writing where the kids are going in, and they're doing some movement, and then they're getting their thoughts down on paper, and then they get on and do some movement, and then they write the next section of their writing piece. They're also using it for poetry that she just did a lesson on last week as well. And so, she is utilizing the lab, like I said, very regularly. And that's just some of the equipment, the snowboarding, they have a surfboard, like they said, the elliptical, the treadmill, the stair climber, and things like that. The kids really seem to enjoy it, and we use it for our PBIS rewards. That's one of the rotations they can use, and they, it's always the first to go. That's the first that they sign up for. You can go to the next one. So, basically, through this, what we're trying to do is just get movement into our classroom daily. This is just a little example of how we're doing it in K-2 when they don't go to the lab. This is something called Go Noodle, and it's basically a brain break. And after an activity or a lesson, they get up, and there's tons of things that they can choose from on Go Noodle, from dancing to zumba to yoga, Pilates, all kinds of things. And it's anywhere from 30 seconds to 90 seconds, and it's a quick brain break, and the kids love it. Our K-2 teachers use it a lot as well. So, just some things to leave you with that we learned from our training is that crossing the midline organizes, integrates, and energizes your brain. You learn 10% more while standing. Your embodied cognition uses gestures, actions, and motions to help you understand a concept. Exercise grows brain cells. Movement facilitates cognition. What makes us move is also what makes us think. Healthy, active kids make better learners. We are made to move. And the positive benefits of physical activity last for 15 to 20 minutes, depending on the person. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you have your students come up into the microphone and say their full name?
Sure.
My name is Myra Gwen Hanbury.
My name is Malachi Eugene Moore.
Great. Myra and Malachi, thank you very much.
Malachi, did you participate in Battle of the Books? I thought so. I recognized you. Good job.
Mr. Baldwin. I saw him come in. Okay, the equipment that we saw the children on, just briefly tell everybody where that money came from.
All right. That money came from our PEP grant that we received. That was the last little bit of funding that we had to implement programs at the elementary level. We have implemented the same types of rooms at the high schools, one at the Early College and at the high school, and at both middle schools. And so, now, we have started the process at the elementary schools.
Okay. And the total grant was for?
$2.2 million.
And the equipment that we saw in the monitor today, about how much was that?
That was $50,000 between the two schools, Central and Griggs.
Great. We appreciate all your hard work and effort in getting us that grant.
I appreciate your support more so than anything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
At 4 o'clock today, we attended a work session. The items that we heard during the work session were about the Mobile Crisis Unit, and Keith Hamm gave us that presentation. We received information on the new athletic discipline guidelines, and that was for the middle schools and the high school. We received information on the 2015-16 capital outlay and technology budget, and changes were made based on what the board had recommended at the last work session. We also had the first reading and revision to Policy 7500, Workday in Overtime, and that just dealt with, all employees will be required to have direct deposit probably beginning this summer. And then, there was also a discussion on the driver's education program. Next, do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, the schools have always had a great working relationship with the Sheriff's Department, and at this time, we'd just like to recognize the Sheriff's Department, Susan Johnson, who's the sheriff, and chief deputies and that, and also the school resource officers. So, they could come up to the front. I saw a few of you walk in, and then the board.
At this time, we'd like to recognize Deputy Lisa Starcher.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Jason Jones. Deputy Jonna King.
Thank you.
And to the whole Sheriff's Department in recognition and appreciation of the continued support and service provided to the Currituck County Schools by you, your department, and the school resource officers. And I can honestly say, board members in all the districts I've worked in in my career, we have the best relationship with our Sheriff's Department of any place I've ever been. They are with us anytime we need them for anything, and we sincerely appreciate all they do. So, thank you. Thank you very much. (applause) Yes. Absolutely. (laughter) You're in the front. Stand up there. She was trying to hide. You were going to tighten up a little. Matt, I can't see you at all. (laughter) There you go. (laughter) Thank you. Sorry for what you're around. I almost wanted to hide. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. (laughter) Lisa was, is the school resource officer at Currituck Middle School, and Jason is
the school resource officer at Moyac Middle School. Okay, next, National Assistant Principals Recognition Month. Ms. Osmond?
Good evening, board. This month is the month we recognize our assistant principals in our schools, and we all know how hard our assistant principals work. They work tirelessly. They're part of the foundation of each school. We're very proud here in Currituck County to grow leaders in our district, and I can sincerely say also about our assistant principals, I think this is the finest group of assistant principals anyplace. I know our principals would agree because they're right hands and they're left hands. Our assistant principals do numerous activities and duties, but I can also proudly say that they are focused on student learning, and they all know that that's why we're here, is for the students, and that's what they have in mind every day when they come to work. So, and they work tirelessly, long hours, so we're very much in appreciation for all they do. So, as I call you up, assistant principals, if you'll come and be recognized, please. Deb Gorza from Moyac Middle School.[990.13][990.13](applause) Denise Fallon from JP Knapp Early College.[992.13][992.13](applause) Daven Davenport from Currituck Middle School.[994.13][994.13](applause) It's really Abram, but we all calling. Kevin Goines, Shawboro Elementary School.[997.13][997.13](applause) Dan Palmetakis, he's under the weather today. He's not here, but we appreciate all he does, from Moyac Elementary School. Keba Baldwin from Central Elementary School and Griggs Elementary School.[1007.43][1007.43](applause) Susan Camden, Jarvisburg Elementary School and Moyac Elementary School.[1019.93][1019.93](applause) Randy Wood from Currituck County High School.[1022.93][1022.93](applause) John Lassiter, Currituck County High School.[1024.93][1024.93](applause) And Javonda Crutch, Currituck County High School.[1026.93][1026.93](applause) And you can see how dependable they are. They're all here. It's awesome. We appreciate that very much. And I can tell you, assistant principals, our little token of appreciation is not nearly enough for you. There's not a day that goes by that we don't appreciate everything you do. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.[1040.13][1040.13](applause)
One big family. One big family. Mama, you get in the middle. Mama. (laughter) None of them are looking at the camera. Thank you guys.
Thank you.[1049.13][1049.13](applause) Next, student recognition. First, state qualifiers for National Geography B.
Good evening again, and I'm going to ask Derek Whitehurst and his teacher, Kim Jackson, to please come forward. I'm going to just tell you a little bit about it. Ms. Jackson knows a lot more than I do, but Derek is a student at Currituck County Middle School, and I guess for the last three years, I've had the pleasure of being able to mediate, moderate their local geography B, and it's so impressive. I learned so much. I have to do homework for a week ahead of time so I can pronounce the locations and the states and the countries and the rivers, and it's just amazing how much I learn when I go through that process. Derek was our Currituck County Middle School winner, and I'm going to let you, let Ms. Jackson tell the rest of the story.
Well, first of all, thank you for having us here tonight. It's such a pleasure to be here recognizing the great things that our kids are doing. Tonight, I'd like to share some information about the Geography B. We do this with National Geographic, and we've been doing it every year that I can remember, and I've been around a long time, so anyway. In December, we hold classroom rounds with all of our students participating at the school. The top-performing students answer a series of about seven questions, and then, we enter a tiebreaker round to narrow the field to only 10 students and two alternates. In January, we held our school championship at CCMS, as you said, with our wonderful moderator, and Derek Whitehurst became our school champion. Derek went on to complete a written test that we submitted to National Geographic, and he qualified for the State B, which was held last weekend at the UNC Charlotte Auditorium last weekend. We're so proud of his accomplishment, and we're happy to recognize him as our CCMS Geography B winner, Derek Whitehurst.[1158.65][1158.65](applause) I'd also like to take the opportunity to publicly thank Moyac Women's Club, who donated our cash prizes for both first and second-place winners and all 10 of our participants. We really appreciate their support. (applause)
Congratulations, Derek. Next, student recognitions, the Science Olympiad teams. Ms. Kinzel.
Good evening, Dr. Domney, members of the board, and Superintendent Osmond. For the first time in many years, and first time I can ever remember, and I've been around a long time too, we've had all four of our secondary schools enter a team into the Science Olympiad competition. So, this is kind of a momentous occasion for us, and we'd like to celebrate that. Teams from Currituck County High School, JP Knapp Early College, Currituck County Middle School, and Moyac Middle School traveled to East Carolina University to compete in the regional tournament. These tournaments are rigorous academic interscholastic competitions that consist of a series of different hands-on, interactive, challenging, and also inquiry-based events that are connected to the various disciplines within the science, sciences of biology and earth science, environmental science, chemistry, physics, engineering, technology, the whole STEM gamut. And tonight, we have team members and their academic coaches with us tonight to be able to talk about their experiences, what they've learned, and what they brought home as winners. So, we're going to start first with Mrs. Crystal Schultz from the JP Knapp Early College.[1271.83][1271.83](applause)
Hello. This is my first year sponsoring Science Olympiad. It was really exciting. It was fun. We got to do the whole crazy weather thing, but we had a good time there. We had a small team, but we had a lot of fun. We have seven members on our team. Two of our members did place at the event. They weren't able to be here. Taylor Berry and Nina Owens both placed second place in Write It, Do It, and in Experimental Design, so we were able to go home with some awards. I have two members with me that are going to talk to you about their experiences with Science Olympiad and the events that they participated in. I have Kendall Axum and Caitlin Joseph with me.[1318.47][1318.47](applause) They weren't quite prepped enough for this, so.
Okay. So, we competed in four events. We competed in entomology, crave the wave, disease detectives, and forensics. And I like Science Olympiad because I think it's a great experience to like learn new things about science that we don't get to learn in the classroom, and it's nice because we learn different study techniques and team-building strategies and things like that.
I enjoy it because it's fun. It's not just about taking a test and winning medals. It's about working together to complete a common goal.
Great.[1364.26][1364.26](applause)
Okay, Caitlin and Kendall, congratulations. We're glad you participated. Could one of you tell me how the competition is judged?
I believe it's by like the lowest score wins. So, like on the test, we do test events, so the more you miss, you know, the more points. So, if the least you miss is how you win, I guess. And then, the building events, I'm not sure how they're judged because I have never done one. But it's like the lowest score wins.
Kind of like golf.[1395.47][1395.47](laughter)
Now, when you did your forensics, can you tell them maybe a little bit about what that process was like?
Well, forensics was a really fun event, I thought, but we definitely needed a lot more experience in chemistry, and we haven't taken chemistry yet, so it was really difficult. But we had fun. I don't remember what we placed in that, but we did pretty good for not knowing much about chemistry.[1426.11][1426.11](laughter) It was fun, you know, we got to wear the goggles and everything.
Yeah, we had lab coats on and everything.
Totally looked like you were doing chemistry.
that consist of a series of different hands-on, interactive, challenging, and also inquiry-based events that are connected to the various disciplines within the sciences of biology and earth science, environmental science, chemistry, physics, engineering, technology, the whole STEM gamut. And tonight, we have team members and their academic coaches with us tonight to be able to talk about their experiences, what they've learned, and what they brought home as winners. So we're going to start first with Mrs. Crystal Schultz from the JP Napp Early College.
Hello. This is my first year sponsoring Science Olympiad. It was really exciting. It was fun. We got to do the whole crazy weather thing, but we had a good time there. We had a small team, but we had a lot of fun. We have seven members on our team. Two of our members did place at the event. They weren't able to be here. Taylor Berry and Nina Owens both placed second place in Write It, Do It, and in Experimental Design, so we were able to go home with some awards. I have two members with me that are going to talk to you about their experiences with Science Olympiad and the events that they participated in. I have Kendall Axum and Caitlin Joseph with me. They weren't quite prepped enough for this, so.
Okay. So, we competed in four events. We competed in Entomology, Crave the Wave, Disease Detectives, and Forensics. And I like Science Olympiad because I think it's a great experience to like learn new things about science that we don't get to learn in the classroom, and it's nice because we learn different study techniques and team building strategies and things like that.
I enjoy it because it's fun. It's not just about taking a test and winning medals. It's about working together to complete a common goal.
Okay, Caitlin and Kendall, congratulations. We're glad you participated. Could one of you tell me how the competition is judged?
Um, I believe it's by like the lowest score wins. So like, on the test, we do test events, so the more you miss, you know, the more points. So if the least you miss is how you win, I guess. And then the building events, I'm not sure how they're judged because I have never done one. But it's like the lowest score wins.
Kind of like golf.
Now, when you did your forensics, can you tell them maybe a little bit about what that process was like?
Well, forensics was a really fun event, I thought, but we definitely needed a lot more experience in chemistry, and we haven't taken chemistry yet, so it was really difficult. But we had fun. I don't remember what we placed in that, but we did pretty good for not knowing much about chemistry. It was fun, you know, we got to wear the goggles and everything.
Yeah, we had lab coats on and everything.
Totally looked like you were doing chemistry.
They got a whole box full of equipment.
So it did give them an opportunity to maybe use some practices they have not been exposed to, so they're looking forward to that event again. I think they both agreed that, you know, that chemistry background's going to probably, you know, give them a little bit more advantage in that, but they did enjoy the process. I think your favorite event was probably...
Entomology, which is like the study of insects. It was really cool because they had like real insects there that you could look at and stuff. And I remember last year they had like live ones, so that was really cool to see and to...
And I was real lucky that I sort of added an event to them right before we were leaving. We had some issues with people not being able to go because of the weather, and then we had, you know, a personal family issue. A student couldn't go, so we were shuffling, and they graciously took on an event that they had about, you know, from the time they got here to, you know, from here to Greenville to get prepped for. So, you know, thumbs up for going for it. Yes. But they were still smiling when they came back.
Congratulations, and once again, thank you for participating.
Thank you.
Quick study. Our next group is coming from Currituck County Middle School, and their coach is Debbie Pollan.
My first time talking in front of you guys. Hi there. First, I would like to say thank you for supporting us in being able to do something like this. We had a lot of fun. We developed some really, really great relationships with each other. These are four of the nine that were on my team. Six of my nine got first places in various activities or events. The other three that were on our small team also placed, so everybody on our team at least came home with something. Matthew and his partner came in first with Write It, Do It, and Jacob was his partner, Jacob Stone. Ian Beatty and Sydney Toll, who are not here today, they placed first in Experimental Design. Sydney Gardner and Cassie Key, who are also not here, they placed first in Entomology, the study of bugs. They love the bugs, just like these other ladies do. Ashby King, who is right here, and Zane Liverman, they placed also, and Nicole Cunningham also placed before leaving that competition. I don't know what else to say, but I'll just let you guys talk. Do you want to talk about your experience up there?
It was really fun. We had a great time, and we came home with rewards.
Which made it all great, right?
Came home with the prize.
I joined because I heard, last year, in Mr. Roller's class, we did a bridge project, and one of my friends, Jacob Stone, was doing that for Science Olympads. So I joined because I wanted to build a bridge. So that's how we got in. That's how I got in. Then we built the bridge, and then after that, we saw that there was empty spaces, so we joined three others, which was Write It, Do It.
So, talk about the bridge for a second, because the bridge was really, really fun also.
Our bridge held all the weight, but sadly, it held a lot. It was, it weighed a lot, so...
So the reason why we didn't place was because we didn't realize that the weight of our bridge was part of the competition. And so we had a wonderful bridge that held every bit of the sand that could be held, and, but it was heavy, and so the efficiency of the bridge, they didn't even count it for us. So what are we going to do next year?
Build a lighted bridge.
Good plan, good plan.
Good answer.
Also, Matthew, thank you. So, Zane, come on up. So tell about your experience.
I had a whole lot of fun. It was real fun doing the duct tape challenge and the meteorology. I did not do good with disease detectives, though.
It's hard. They also got thrown into some of the events at the very, very last minute. And poor Zane here, we were short some students, and so about, what, about two weeks before the competition?
Yes.
We said, he just happened to come into my classroom during one of our meetings, and we said, "Zane, join our team." And lovely parents allowed him to, very last minute, without any forward knowledge or, you know, anything, just threw him right on in, and he was such a great team player. Came out and did anything that I asked him to do, went home and tried to get things done at home. Just really, really great how these kids are all coming together with all of this.
Zane, I'm curious. You said you were in a duct tape competition?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what did, what did you have to do?
We had to build a rectangular prism out of duct tape, and it had to be the tallest one won, and we lost by half a centimeter.
Oh, wow.
Half a centimeter.
Very cool. Okay, so Ashby, Ashby, come on up, and talk about yours. Show the ribbons that you got or the medals that you've gotten. She brought hers. Not all of us remembered them.
I got second, third, fourth, and fifth. I got fourth in Crave the Wave, second in Elastic Glider Launcher, and third in duct tape. And I guess the duct tape was my favorite because we, you couldn't prepare for it.
We did prepare some, though. What did we do to prepare?
Made a boat.
Made a boat.
That had to hold the most weight in water, I was thinking.
Great. Awesome. And Nicole, come on up. You don't want to say anything? Are you sure? Anyway, we had a fantastic job, time doing all of this, and we are very much involved in getting ready for the state competition. We're going to be going at the end of April. We're going to be spending the night in Raleigh. We're going to be exploring Raleigh during the day on Friday, and then we're going to compete on Saturday, and hopefully come back with some more great experiences. So again, we really appreciate your support in allowing us to do this, because it's awesome.
Now, how many of your students are going?
All nine.
Oh, all nine.
All nine, yes. And they've, we just got information that we're allowed to compete. Even the folks that aren't eligible are going to be allowed to compete in a couple of new challenges that are not part of the normal competitions, and so we're already brainstorming. It's more duct tape stuff. So, yes, we're all...
Big hit, so.
I'm sorry.
I said, seems to be a big hit, the duct tape stuff.
It really is. All the kids really love the duct tape challenge, and we are, we're brainstorming about bringing in entomology to the duct tape and coming up with a really creative, functioning, hissing cockroach is the last thing that we were talking about to that particular competition. So we'll see how it goes, and we're just in the early stages of that one. But anyway, thank you again very, very much.
Congratulations, and good luck in Raleigh.
Thank you.
Our final team that's here this evening is really one of the pioneers. They wanted me to use this. They were the pioneers of pulling all these Olympiads together across the district. So I'd like to introduce to you the Moyoc Middle School coaches, and that would be Vicki Turner and Lynette Warden.
All right. I wasn't prepared to speak, but I just wanted to say that I have three students that are with us, two of which are going to go to the state competition, and the third one might be our honorary member. He unfortunately came very, very close to taking his wheeled vehicle to states, but another team beat him out by just a few points. So, anyway, we started Science Olympiad about 10 years ago. I actually competed in Science Olympiad when I was in high school, so it was very near and dear to my heart. So when I got the opportunity in North Carolina to start a team, I kind of jumped at that chance. And I've watched our students at Moyoc Middle School go up to the high school and to JP Napp and say, "Hey, we really want this team here. We did it at our middle school, and we really, really want to do it here." And so I'm glad to see that CCM has joined us in that venture, because it is an awful lot of fun. We took 19 students with us to the regional competition in Greenville. We came in fourth place overall, which was outstanding for our team. Last year, our team came in second, I think, or third, and we took all of our team last year. So this year, we have four students that qualified for states. It's a fantastic opportunity. It's a great STEM education, and I'm very proud of our students for the fourth place. They only take the top three teams to states, so our students are going to go as individuals this year, which is a great opportunity to explore that NC State that they have. So I might let Ms. Warden talk.
You had asked previously about how things are scored. The kids are given like a rubric that they have to, so certain rules that they have to go by, and they have to spend all that time preparing and making sure, because we tell them all the time, "You have to read your directions. You have to read your directions." So that's what they spend a lot of time doing and going over to prepare for these events, but they're based off of a rubric, so they know what to expect for the most part when they get in there. And I think Austin here is going to start us off with talking a little bit about Science Olympiad at our school.
So, my name is Austin Hone, and I'm in Ms. Warden's Earth Science class. I'm glad I had the opportunity to take the ninth grade science course while I'm in eighth grade, because that gave me the advantage in, when I took the Green Generation Science Test. It had a lot to do with what I've been learning in Ms. Warden's class, such as having the ecosystems, or the study of the hydrosphere, or sustainability, which is the study of like new energy sources and all that stuff. I also competed in the Picture This event with Madison Hendrick and Jamie Philbrook, who could not be here today. And we had to do something that was similar type game to the Pictionary, where one teammate would draw some type of scientific term, and then the other two teammates would have to try and guess what that sort of scientific term was. And we placed first in that event. And I would like to thank the Currituck County School District for allowing us to be able to compete at state level and to go to NC State in April, and I'm really looking forward to it, and I hope to place in both of my events as well. And I also thank Ms. Warden and Ms. Turner for being able to take us to our competitions as well.
I'm Madison, and I competed in three different events. Picture This with Austin and Jamie, and It Matters and Crave the Wave. Picture This is like Pictionary, and we prepared with science terms, because that's what the paper says, that it's like a Pictionary, it's tougher with science terms. So we prepare with like different fronts and science terms that we're used to seeing. We get in there, and we get words like ladybug and golf ball and frozen. So we're sitting there, and one of my best experiences with this one, with Picture This, was Austin had gotten the word frozen, and he drew an ice cube that looked like it was on fire. So we're, we're like, for about a good probably 30 to 20 to 30 seconds, we were sitting there arguing with each other what it was, and we finally got it. No, we didn't get that one. But we got, we did very well. At the end, like, by the time we were done, there was probably, there was still a lot more teams to go, and the room we were in had said that we had the best, which made us feel a lot more confident than we were. Another event I did was Crave the Wave, which is all about wave frequencies, and I had done, we, I figured out I could, I could bring in a binder full of research. So I had this huge binder full of research, and about, and it was like everything on the event sheet that should the event be about, except for, none of that was on the actual event. So I had, I had like a huge binder with like 40 pages of notes, nothing that helped me. We placed fifth, which was very surprising, but we did it. The third event I did was It Matters with Caleb, and we, I wanted to do It Matters because I've always been very interested in chemistry. So I look, and I like, I looked at it, and I was like, "Oh, it's chemistry. I got this." So I walk in there, I walk in this one, and I told her, "I'm doing Science Olympiad this year." And I'm like, "But the only event I really care about is It Matters and Crave the Wave." So I go to It Matters. I started doing it, and I realized, oh, we've already learned all this. So we had already learned all this previously from Ms. Warden, so I was very, I like benefited from being in that class. I don't know how, but I did. We had, I had, I personally had a lot of fun in there in It Matters. We ended up placing third overall. And I would say my best experience, going to EC, what is it, ECU, would be that we didn't have time to stop for breakfast, so Ms. Warden, Ms. Warden... Ms. Warden brought us donuts, and within like two seconds, like all three huge boxes from Krispy Kreme were gone.
Yeah, I can understand that.
We wouldn't, we won't let her down, but she still has to bring us donuts to school. But I talk too much, so I'm going to let Caleb talk.
My name is Caleb Kelly, and I would like to talk to you about some of my competitions. This here is our wheel vehicle, and the object of that competition was they have an obstacle in the center of the course, and you have to go around that obstacle to try to reach a target area. And we made our vehicle to where the front end of the vehicle turns. So when we go to set up, the area to launch it in was a lot smaller than we thought it would be. So the first time we launched it, it ran into the can, and just sort of like pushed it over and stopped. So we did pretty, we thought we did pretty bad, but we turned out, we came in first place, which we're excited about. Yeah, but sadly, the JV team beat us.
But we think the can didn't really have anything to do with the actual competition.
After reading the directions, we discovered the can didn't have as much weight as we thought it did.
And Caleb was kind of our builder, so he does a really, really good job on his building events. And this one's one that he put a lot of work into, every morning bringing it in, making sure he worked on it, tested it lots of times, so he really puts a lot of work into his building events.
I also competed in Bridge, which our bridge is around 72 grams, and it held, I think, 27 pounds, which we thought was pretty good, but sadly, we had a construction violation, so put us into another team.
Again, reading those directions.
One of the other events that I did was Road Scholar, which me and my partner, Jonah Hurwick, had, it was about maps, and we had no clue what we were doing. And we had to give directions how to get from the Excalibur Hotel, which was on this map, to some house somewhere. I don't know where it was at. So we put, take a left turn, take a right turn, and then go forward and stop. But we placed fifth, so I don't, I don't know what we did, but I guess we did okay. I also did It Matters with Madison, which we have learned a lot of that stuff in Ms. Warden's class, as you said. And we've also got a lot of help from Mr. Roller, since he is at our school now this year, and he's given a lot of help with the building competitions and such.
Thank you very much.
Madison, do you know Katie Trailer, our student school board member that's normally here, but she's not here today? We thought you might be her sister. You and her, if you watch back some of our school board meetings where she gets to talk, you and her have a lot in common. And it's really cute and very entertaining, so don't ever lose that, because as you get older, we become boring.
And I'm thinking, if you need a volunteer for a chaperone, it sounds like a lot of fun.
Evan with the bulldog suit on. Evan, okay, so we had Evan.
Hey, nobody, nobody can hear you unless you're talking to that little thing there.
So we had Evan Scully, one of our also team members, who, he had this like thing with the bulldog suit that he will not let anybody else put it on. So he puts it on, and he does not take it off for the entire day. Like, he goes to competitions with the bulldog suit on. He goes upstage to receive medals with the bulldog suit on. We were scared he was going to fall. He didn't, unfortunately. Wait, fortunately. I mean, fortunately, he didn't fall. He was, a lot of people decided they were going to try and pick up Evan and steal him from us, which didn't successfully work because he is a bulldog, and he always comes back to his rightful owner, the bulldogs. I'm going to stop talking.
Thank you, guys.
Obviously, their teams are going to be busting out of the windows up at Moyoc and at Currituck. I mean, if y'all have this much fun, having, you know, science is fun. So yay, congratulations. Again, they've all mentioned they're going to be going to a state competition here at the end of the month, and so we congratulate them for that. I also wanted to point out whether, they're not here tonight, but Currituck County High School also had a team. They placed fifth overall. They earned two silver and three bronze medals. So again, we had winners from all of our teams. And I want to, just one more thing, and I know this is going a little long, but this is not the only academic competition we have going on in the, in the county. So I, just a quick shout out that Moyoc, both the middle schools and the high schools, had a math competition recently as well, and we have some winners, yeah, that are part of both teams. They competed at Chawan Community College and Elizabeth City State. They came home winners, and we're going to be sending a crew of seven kids back to state competition here again at the end of April. So again, lots of good, strong academic competitions, and I think sometimes they don't get the big headlines and the cheerleaders, but obviously, we're all cheerleading for you because we think that's really important. And not to be outdone, the elementary also had... Um and not to be outdone, the elementary also has Math Twenty-four Competition that was held. It was a district-wide tournament. And we had representation from every school come to one site, compete for the Math Twenty-four Challenge. We also invited people from um our friends in Camden and I believe Hartford, Hartford Grammar. And they came over and competed and um while they're not here tonight, we had Jarvisburg pretty much sweep the floor with everybody. They won um nearly all of the top uh challenges, but they also awarded students that had the uh the top scores for each of the teams represented. So um there is a wealth of good things going on in our county um as regards to our academics. So thanks for letting us share.
Thank you. And Ms. Turner, Ms. Warden, thanks for uh bringing the Science Olympia and getting everybody else involved. I guess I always wondered what a teacher would be like, that you'd learn a lot in your class, but you don't know why. I'm still trying to figure out that concept. Next, uh student board member reports. Mary Kate?
Well, as you can see, we're a little shorthanded tonight. Katie and I are both um representing our senior members as well. So um tonight, our board member reports for ourselves are gonna be kind of lengthy because we divided in half rather than in fours. So I'll get started with um Shawboro Elementary. And they had a science night last night that was a huge success and very well attended. Many students turned out and had a lot of fun learning about the science of everyday items. The Spring Fling at Shawboro has been rescheduled for April seventeenth from five to seven thirty. On April twenty-first, Shawboro will have their Third Nine Weeks Assembly. Kindergarten and first grade awards will be at eight thirty, second and third grade awards will be at nine fifteen, and fourth and fifth grade awards will be at ten AM. On April twenty-first, Coasty and the Coast Guard will be coming to speak to the second and fifth graders about boat safety. April twenty-fourth will be the Student of the Month luncheon during students' lunchtimes. And on April thirtieth at five thirty, there will be a PTA meeting and third grade musical. For Moayac Elementary School, they are all set for spring break next week and I know I am as well. After that, we are looking forward to our PTA-sponsored Basket Bingo Night on April seventh, on April sixteenth, excuse me, at six PM and our PTA sponsored talent showcase on April twenty-fourth at five thirty. In addition to those events, we are excited that our fifth grade will be presenting a patriotic musical presentation for our school on the afternoon of April twenty-second for parents later that evening. Finally, we hope to have a fantastic turnout for our onsite kindergarten registration day from two to six thirty on April sixteenth. For Central Elementary School, Central Elementary Class and Individual Pictures will be on April fourteenth. Kindergarten registration will take place on April twentieth from two to six PM. There will be a Water Safety Demonstration Day on April twentieth for the second and fifth graders. And Field Day will take place on April twenty first, on April twenty-third, excuse me, for kindergarten and second grade, for kindergarten through second grade and on April twenty-fourth through, for third through fifth graders. For Currituck County Middle School, um CCMS has several events coming up in April. Our eighth grade semi-formal dance is Friday, May first. Our Beta Club um is having a pet drive to collect pet food and supplies for the local pet shelter. If you would like to donate pet supplies, please bring them to our school and give them to one of our students um during the week of April twelfth through April seventeenth. The Winter and Spring Awards Ceremony for Cheerleading, Basketball, Wrestling, Baseball, Softball and Track will be on May twenty-first at six PM in the CCMS auditorium. Currituck Middle will have their first annual art show today. Well, I guess it took place from three to six PM in the school lobby. All students taking art classes will have their work displayed tonight. Ms. King has selected five pieces of art to be displayed in her office. The student's work was just beautiful, she said. The eighth grade band will be traveling to King's Dominion to compete on April twenty-fifth. We will have our Club Day tomorrow from one to three. Students will participate in clubs including the Making a Difference Club, Science Olympiad, Algebra Club, Book Club, Beta Club, Band, Photography and Fitness Clubs, along with many more fun activities. Now for Currituck County High School, today, the Health Science Club held a fundraiser during Power Hour in the courtyard in honor of Autism Awareness Day. Students were able to play games and win prizes. Admission was two dollars and if you wore blue, as I did, which is the color for autism awareness, admission was one dollar. Doing this, the Health Science Club was able to raise five hundred dollars benefiting surfing for autism. So I think that's awesome, especially considering it was all students that participated in this event. We have been advertising to fill the role of the junior representatives for next year. Um and applications can be picked up in the guidance office and must be returned by April thirtieth. Cap and gown pictures for seniors have been rescheduled to April thirteenth. Cap and gown delivery will be on May fifth. The ASVAB will be administered on April twenty-ninth at eight AM and should be taken by students who are considering a career in the military or want to see what job skills they have. You can sign up for that. And um also, the CCHS FFA chapter has invited all the third graders in Currituck County to attend their annual Digging into Agriculture Day, which is something I'm very much looking forward to. Um and also, I'm looking forward to our prom, which is themed A Night on the Town and will be held on May second at the Hilton Garden Inn in Kitty Hawk. Tickets for seniors, we will be on sale from April thirteenth to April seventeenth and will be open to juniors from April twentieth to twenty-fourth. CCHS is extremely proud of our students' performances in The Sound of Music that took place this weekend. And if you missed it, you missed out on an awesome show.
Okay, before we leave you, Mary Kate, the uh Digging into Agriculture with the third grade students and that at the Rural Center, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's um on the, it's at the Rural Center.
And what date's that?
Um April sixteenth.
April sixteenth.
So Ms. Wayne, we've been working on it in our ag classes. Um I'm in Horticulture Two right now, so we've been busy preparing and selecting t-shirts and we're really excited to have all the third graders come and been working on our booths really hard, so we're very excited.
Third graders will be there and anybody else from the public is invited to go.
Um I believe it starts at nine. I will have to double check, but I'm pretty sure it's at nine.
I've been there the last two years and it's just amazing, you know, the things that they have for the kids to see and do.
Yes, it's definitely, it definitely opens their mind to all the broad um area of agriculture, so.
Really.
We're excited.
Thank you, Mary Kate. Katie?
Good evening, everyone. Um before I start tonight with my reports, I just wanted to point out two things. Um Alex is not here tonight to announce her National Whatever Day, so um I'm announcing it. And actually, today is National PB and J Day, which very much so applies to our school system because I remember in elementary school, that's all I got for lunch was PB and J because that was the quickest thing my mom could put together. So kudos to all you parents that make PBs and Js every morning. You know, it's National PB and J Day, so we're honoring that. Um also, I came across this quote and um I think as we approach exams, and I know that teachers are approaching the end of the year, um it's a good reminder. It says, striving for success without hard work is like trying to harvest where you haven't planted. And um I think that applies to a lot of areas of hard work that the board members do and the people who attend meetings. Um the principals, the assistant principals, so I just thought that that was a really good quote to mention tonight um as we come up towards the end of the year. All right, so I have several elementary schools and Knott's Island, Moayac and my favorite JP Knapp. Um Griggs Elementary School, their Third Nine Weeks Awards Assembly will be held on April fifteenth. Griggs is also proud to announce that they just completed their fundraiser for childhood leukemia and lymphoma, and while they do not have an exact total, they know they raised over a thousand dollars. Congratulations to them. On April sixteenth, the third graders will be participating in the CCHS FFA's Annual Digging into Agricultural Day, which is what Mary Kate just mentioned. On April twentieth, there will be a Coast Guard Boat Safety Demonstration for second and fifth graders. On April twenty-third is kindergarten registration. And on April twenty-fourth, Town Bank will be presenting to the first and second graders on money saving. Wow, that's great. They need that early one. Um April thirtieth is the annual fifth grade wax museum at twelve forty-five and six PM. That is my favorite part of elementary school. I do remember that. Um Jarvisburg Elementary Parent Group will sponsor a native pride dance dancer to perform an assembly for the students and staff on the day after spring break, April thirteenth. Also, they will celebrate Third Nine Weeks Awards on Friday nineteenth. The US Coast Guard will present a water safety assembly for our second graders on April twenty-first and on April thirtieth. All are invited to attend the Jarvisburg Scott Talent, Talent Show in our gym at six thirty PM. Knott's Island Middle School, Elementary School held a barbecue dinner last Friday night and raised over a thousand dollars. On April twenty-second, there will be a kindergarten registration from two to six PM. And Field Day will be held the afternoon of May first. For Moayac Middle School, the Math Counts Team competed last week at Chawan University. The Moayac Middle FBLA Chapter will be competing at the state competition once they get back from spring break. The Moayac Middle School Band also attended a band clinic from the group of Winsync sponsored by North Carolina Arts Council. The Moayac Middle School is participating in the Regional Battle of the Books Competition on April fourteenth in Elizabeth City. The Rising Sixth Graders from Shawboro and Moayac Elementary will be visiting Moayac Middle School on May sixth. And at six PM, there will be a parent meeting for the parents of the Rising Sixth Graders. For JP Knapp, last Friday's Women's Armor Conference sponsored by SAD was a fantastic success. And also that I just want to thank um Ms. Karen Etheridge and Denise Fallon for attending that and helping us with that event. It really was a huge success and um it was an honor for me to be able to speak there. It was a really great event. I think that it really helped a lot of young women there. Um the Teacher of the Year was Mr. Chuck Martin. The Teacher Assistant of the Year was Ms. Annette Samborski, which is here tonight. Is she still here? Um this week, we have been celebrating the most underappreciated bird with the seagull festival and activities leading up to spring break. And let me say that Mr. Martin is all over that because I have gotten at least twenty emails a day about something about a seagull. I haven't necessarily looked into that. I'm probably gonna get in trouble, but um yeah, so they're really on top of the underappreciated bird and definitely appreciating it this week. Um tomorrow will be a student faculty basketball game and students, of course, will win. Um our graduating seniors are turning in their final requirements for senior seminar, which includes speeches, personal letters to incoming freshmen, video instructions on JP Knapp, public service announcements and school slash community service hours. Acceptance letters for next year's incoming freshmen went out today and Commitment Day is April fifteenth. Um and also, I just want to congratulate everyone who um was in the musical. I know we had several JP Knapp students in it and several Currituck High School students and if you went and saw it, you knew that it was really a great um performance that they worked hard on. So I just want to congratulate them and tell them that they did very well.
Thank you, Katie. Mary Kate? Uh next item on the agenda, field turf requests. Ms. Osmond?
Well, of course, we have Moayac Middle School and Currituck Middle, Currituck County Middle School going to the Science Olympiad State Champ, State Competition, excuse me, in Raleigh, April twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda passes. Next, public comment session. We had one person sign up. Uh Ms. Kinzel?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um as you noted in some of the reports of our student board members, um lots of our elementary schools mentioned the kindergarten registration dates. And I'd just like to take this moment to remind the general public what's going to be happening with our registration for the fifteen sixteen school year. Um beginning April sixth, we're going to be starting an online registration process. We've invested in a program that will allow anybody to access from online and be able to begin filling out the enormous plethora of paperwork, but do it online, which once you put in a field, it will populate across however many pieces of paper we need. So it will um cut down the redundancy um in that whole process. And so we hope that parents will take advantage of that beginning um April sixth. Uh again, we will have detailed information posted on our website with um tutorial videos to help people get in and navigate around. Um there will still be some forms that need to be uh completed and brought to the registrar's office. We're going to try to accommodate parents that um may not live close to our registrar's office and be able to allow them to bring them into the schools where they're closest to. And that would be documents like their birth certificate, proof of residency and anything that needs to be notarized. So obviously, we can't do that online. Um as a convenience, we are offering onsite registration as we've done in the past and allowing parents to bring their children to come into the school building during the school day and actually get assistance with the process, sitting at the computer with a real person. So um those dates will be, uh begin on April fifteenth with Shawboro Elementary School, the sixteenth at Moayac Elementary, uh the twentieth at Central, the twenty-first at Jarvisburg, twenty-second at Knott's Island and on the twenty-third at WT Griggs. Um all of the information is posted on our website. Um secondly, we are also in the season of accepting uh our applications for the NC pre-K program. And those applications can be picked up at any of our schools or by contacting the central office. Ms. Deidre Simmons is in charge of that. She does a fabulous job of helping people navigate that process. And finally, uh specifically to our friends in Knott's Island, we are accepting a pre-application for preschool, three-year-olds and four-year-olds. Um our survey of collecting information, trying to um gather information, whether or not we could feasibly open up a a preschool program with Head Start as a partner, did not yield the results we were hoping for. So we're gonna take a more direct approach and collect the information directly from the citizens who may be interested. And hopefully, we will be able to share that uh with the board as well as with those that have applied and may be eligible for that program uh by the end of May. So anyway, all of that being said, it's a very busy time of year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Kinzel, as soon as you can get me some contact information for the Knott's Island pre-K program for three or four years, let me know and I will blast it out everywhere I can.
We have already sent the applications and the information over to the school. We've asked for them to post signs in the store and to get those around, but I'd be glad to send you more information that you could post or get around. Um so anything you can do to help shake the bushes so that we can reach everybody that may not be in the school system.
Anything you can email me, send it to me.
I sure will. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, information items. The next board work session will be May seventh at the Knapp Professional Learning Center at four. Next Board of Education meeting will be May seventh, uh right here at the Historic Currituck Courthouse at six thirty. Next, board member comments. We'll start with Ms. Etheridge.
Yes, I was able to attend the Amore um Ladies Conference on the twenty-seventh of March. I wanted to tell you a little bit about that event. It was an unplugged empowerment event for young women in Currituck County at the high school, Currituck County High School and as well as JP Knapp Early College. The proceeds did benefit the battered women's shelter, Album Royal Hope Line. And we were honored to have Katie as our speaker for the evening, as well as Ms. Doughty was kind enough to, to speak as well. But just to toot Katie's horn a little bit, um some of you may or may not know her personally. I'll tell you a little bit about her. Katie Phillips, raised in Currituck County since the age of five, is a junior at Knapp, JP Knapp Early College. Katie serves on the Board of Education for Currituck County Schools and is also a junior board member for a local nonprofit organization, Currituck Kids. She will be graduating in the spring of two thousand sixteen and applying to East Carolina University. Her career plans are to go into the healthcare field as a nurse where she desires to work with children. She enjoys traveling, singing in her church band and being at the beach. Katie has a passion for helping others, especially young women, by sharing encouragement and ways to move past the obstacles life often presents. She offers personal experiences and advice to those who need it and strives to lead by example. And I just want to publicly say how proud I am of you and everything that you're doing. Thank you.
Mr. Simmons?
Uh just got two quick things tonight. First off, um our assistant principals that are here tonight. Being in education as long as I was, every time you hear something good about a school, everybody looks at the principal and says, man, what a great job that principal's doing. What they don't understand is it's the assistant principals behind the scene who are taking the heat and having to do most of the grunt work that most people don't see. I cannot thank you enough as a board member of the job that our assistant principals do. You don't get the pat on the back that you should get. You don't get the praise that you should get. You get a lot of the headaches. You get the calls. You have to do with the, deal with the discipline. And I just want to thank you, assistant principals, for doing what you do for our county. Last, uh Dr. Dog, Dr. Dobney and I had a chance to meet with, I think, about twenty-seven of our bus drivers about a week or two ago and just sat down and talked to them with some current concerns they had. One of the major concerns One of the major concerns our bus drivers have is safety on our roads with people running the red lights on our buses. The lights are on, the gates are open, and we have people going right past our buses. We have a couple buses that have cameras on them now that actually photograph the license plates. People, it doesn't take but one second to make a mistake and go by one of our buses and injure one of our students or kill one of our students. It's that time of year. It's warm. The kids get off the bus. All they wanna do is run home and play outside. It's their one chance. So, people who are home watching this on the public, please understand that these kids are kids. They get off the bus and they don't look. If you run those red lights, we're gonna have an accident in this county. And our kids are playing in the streets now. It's warm. Went through Eagle Creek the other afternoon, five o'clock. There's kids everywhere, running up and down the road, playing now. So, please be careful and watch what you're doing on the roads.
Thank you. Ms. Craft?
Yes. I had the privilege of going to Jarvisburg Elementary to their wax museum, which was wonderful as usual. Moayac Elementary School's second graders also had a wax museum, which was equally good. Currituck County High School, the Makerspace Program that I went to at Power Hour, they were flying hovercrafts and making houses out of cards and hats out of cards. It was wonderful. I had a great time with that. Went to Sound of Music, visited the automotive shop. I happened to be lucky enough to be asked the second year in a row to be the moderator for the Battle of the Books at Shawboro Elementary School on Tuesday. And everyone did a fantastic job, but congratulations to Jarvisburg Elementary School, who took first place. And I wanna tell you, they did not miss one question. And it was fifteen rounds, and it was unbelievable. I mean, they were spot-on every time. Went to Moayac Elementary School this month also for Read Across America and was a guest reader there. So, wanna ask, tell everybody to have a wonderful Easter holiday and enjoy your time off. And I also want to say how much we appreciate the assistant principals. Again, as an educator, I know who's behind the scenes lots of times doing things that don't get seen, so thank you.
Ms. Gattis?
I also wanna congratulate our principals and again, thank our Sheriff's Department for everything they do for us. Katie, I wanted to show one thing. I knew about PB and J Day today, by the way. And I learned on the radio this morning as I was learning that. Do you have any idea how many, on average, peanut butter and jelly sandwiches a person eats in a lifetime? Fifteen thousand. That's what they said on the radio this morning. I can't imagine, but just wanted to share that, 'cause you brought it up. I thought it was funny. I actually knew something about this. I attended the Knott's Island Elementary PE night a few Fridays ago. It started at six thirty. The kids did everything from gymnastics to balancing feathers on their hands, noses, foreheads. It was, it was amazing, juggle, juggling and dancing. It started at six thirty. Those kids left there at nine o'clock. We had a sleepover at my house that night, and I can tell you, all of these elementary school girls, five of them, put themselves to bed. That's how tired they were by the end of this evening. So, they were, they were knocked out. School play, I also got to see The Sound of Music. It was phenomenal. I took my daughter. She loved it. So, it is definitely a family event. Anytime our schools put on a chorus or a musical, please bring out your families. It is a ton of fun. We had another Educational Ministries meeting today. We are still looking for any and all churches in Currituck County to please become involved. Our next meeting will be May sixth, so get in touch with myself or the office, and they will get you in touch with me, or the high school can contact them if you wanna become involved. I had some of the barbecue and chicken dinner from the Knott's Island PTA event. Phenomenal. They actually sold out. So, I do wanna say thank you to Southland for helping them put that together. Great food. Tonight was a very interesting and fun meeting for us. We loved having the kids. I wanna tell all the kids and families to be safe this spring break. You know, we're gonna have a lot of fun. Do keep in mind with those roads, we're gonna have a lot of kids out of school next week, so watch what you're doing. Watch who's on the corners, crossing roads, things to that effect. Be careful. And last thing, which I hate to end on a bad note, but April's actually Child Abuse Prevention Month. So, while you're at home spending time with these families and your kids and doing family time, keep in mind those kids that are less fortunate, that really need that extra support, and hug your, hug your kids a little tighter. Thank you and have a good time.
I too went to the Sound of Music, and I've been seeing plays that Mr. White has put on for probably the last twenty years or more. And it is amazing to me, the quality of the talented students that we have in this county. You know, and just when you think it won't get any better, it does. It just, it's kinda mind-boggling how well things go in the play production there. And I would like to thank Mr. White for everything he does. And I was noticing that he had an orchestra this time, and it had nineteen members. And I think there was only one schoolperson in there, so he got eighteen volunteers to play in that orchestra, which, you know, for three nights, or two nights and one afternoon.
Two weeks of practice.
They what?
Because of snow and ice.
Oh, yeah. But anyway, it's amazing. And I'd like to also wish everyone a safe and happy spring break. Be safe. And with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.